Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. It's nine o'clock, we're here in the center hearing room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. As long as you start with a pledge of allegiance, so if you please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we start off with public comment. And first up, I have my old law professor, Susan Smith, so that's kind of fun. So yeah, if you go to that one, I, oh, yeah. Did she say that one? Okay. Sorry, I'm the vice chair, I'm not the chair. I'm just filling in. If you could just introduce yourself for the record and tell us, tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Susan Smith, I live in West Salem. And what's on my mind is the Brooks incinerator. I'm interested, in particular, in asking the commissioners to be sure and be transparent with the public with respect to the incinerator. It, of course, closed, and we were essentially assured it was going to continue to be closed. Now there are rumors, or maybe more than rumors, that said court intends to reopen it by bringing in a Texas firm without any experience running said incinerators. The incinerator has caused pollution of the Brooks area. We don't think it should be reopened, but I think it's a matter that we, of great public interest, and all I would ask for is that the county commissioners be as transparent with the citizens of the county as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Should be in here. Okay, John, and I can't understand this last name, Pro?
Prohodsky.
Prohodsky, you're up, welcome.
I'm John Prohodsky, I live in South Salem on West Knopville Street. And my interest is solid waste management in Marion County. As Susan said, there's some rumors that the county might be reopening the incinerator. And my only, I have a simple request, that the county do the diligence required to open it. They, I'd like to see the county do an evaluation of the health risk of the incinerator, the environmental risk, the financial risk to the county, any liabilities associated with it, plus the ability of the, of any operator of the incinerator to operate it successfully in a responsible manner. My background is doing software tests and quality for life and mission critical devices. So I understand risk management, and it's not rocket science, really very basic and it's a very powerful tool. And I encourage the county to do a risk assessment, manage and mitigate and control any associated risk if the risks are acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last up, I have James Weigel. Did I say that right?
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
I'm gonna leave you something to read when I get down.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and one for staff, we've got extra wood.
Well, it's nice to see you guys here. Sorry I'm wasting a little bit of your time, but on my end, I know it's not a waste of time. So basically, three years?
Introduce yourself for the record, please.
What's that?
Just say your name and where you live.
Oh, James Weigel, Marion County.
Great, okay.
So basically, three years ago, my sister passed away. And her kids started to take care of the place, couldn't do it, so I basically took over the loan, took care of everything, got it rented. Fast forward to today, found out when I turned it back over to the kids in July of this year, there was a person living in an RV behind the house, behind the shop. And so I put an eviction notice on there, it's illegal. The year prior, they tried to do the same thing, the renter that was there. And code enforcement told them what the law was. So everything was said and done. Well, this gal comes back, like six months later, breaks into the trailer, and she's still there today. So I find out through Marion County Police that I gotta go through a process to get her out. I do all that. In the court, because it's still in my sister's name, he said that the judge said I had to go through probate, which is fine, so I'm doing that now also. Meanwhile, she's still there. I've got Marion County Sheriff's Office telling me that they could arrest me for trespass, for being on the property, that I can't go there. The landlord tenant court, she's, she's in an RV, she's not a tenant. But I, I paid them the money and went through the process. Code enforcement has fined her for being on the property. She had a court date, I put it all down there for you. And I'm not gonna name names and do all that, I'm not here to do that, I'm just here to make you guys aware of what's actually going on. Four entities of Marion County, and she's still there. And anyways, the probate court, it's all opened up now and going through that process, so I am now named as representative on the property and I can move forward. I sent a notice to the tenant court judge that, under oath, I swore that I was doing what I said I was doing. And so he's got that information, haven't heard from them for two weeks now. Meanwhile, she's now parking on the property with a car in the grass. There's people coming and going all hours of the night. She broke into the house next door three times. She's been stealing water and power. I shut the power off to the shop and the water, so she can't do that there no more. She went next door, did it. Marion County Police came out, arrested her. I waited from 10 o'clock at night until 1:30 in the morning for them to make a report and do everything, and arrest her and take her to jail, never happened. They did arrest her, but didn't take her to jail prior to her breaking in next door the second time. The third time, she went in there, took shower or bath, her red hair's in the tub, plugged the toilet, dope baggie underneath the counter of the sink, cigarette butts on the floor. These people just bought the house and they're gonna rent it, and they can't rent it to anybody. I mean, none of us here would wanna rent that home with this going on next door. So I talked to them next door, they give me permission to pull the trailer out through their backyard and out the side. It'd be a lot easier than trying to navigate it through the way they've got it barricaded in there. So I go out there and I cut one post off on my fence and getting it ready, so that when I get the okay to get her out of there, I can get it out. And the, she calls the police, says I'm cutting her fence, they show up, they're gonna arrest me. So I ceased what I was doing, I showed him all the paperwork, the officer. Soon as I asked if she was an informant of theirs, then everything just went sour. I mean, they, they was gonna arrest me right there, I had 10 minutes to leave the property, I'm pushing it, something's going on. I've tried to get a hold of the sheriff several times, the undersheriff. Nobody's returning my calls, nobody's doing anything for me. So at this point, I'm at the, at, at the thought that I'm just gonna go over and hook on the damn thing and drag it over onto Marion County's property and let you guys deal with it. But that's, again, not the right thing to do. I've tried, and this, this is going on for a long time, and it's starting to stress me, you know?
I appreciate you being here, Mr. Weigel, and it sounds like this is something of a complicated situation. We have your phone number here.
Yeah.
We'll have staff.
That's all I'm asking.
Do some research, and then we'll be back and talk.
Yeah, I just paid the property taxes on three properties, they're all paid in full, and, and it's just, it's wrong.
Okay.
And I thought you guys need to know what's going on.
Okay, we'll do some research.
And I appreciate your time and keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to, just to comment, Mr. Chair, for me, you're not wasting our time by being here, by the way, that's how you started out. We appreciate, we appreciate you coming in, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, next up, we have Project Joy, our fundraiser kickoff. Kathy, you here? Welcome.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. My name is Kathy Bolin, I'm the Workforce Development Coordinator here at Marion County. And I'm here with Erin Hampton and Riley Warren, they're both with Project Joy. And just a little bit about Project Joy, they're an organization that serves foster, adoptive, guardianship, and relative care families. And they have a big job, but their goal is really simple, they just wanna reduce the financial burden for these families, and remind kids that they matter and that they're loved, and to try to bring a smile to their face. So every year, Marion County collaborates with Project Joy to run this toy drive fundraiser, it's an annual fundraiser, and it benefits these Marion County kids and resource families. They're part of the child welfare system, so we help every single year. So why are kids in foster care? Well, the system is really meant to give them a safe, temporary place to live when their parents or guardians aren't able to take care of them. And there are a lot of reasons that a child might be removed from their home. But the most popular reasons are they enter foster care due to things like parental neglect, drug use, domestic violence, or physical abuse, those are the top reasons. And here in Marion County, we have more than 450 children in foster homes. Most of them are under the age of 12, and they typically stay in foster care for about two years. And while the state is able to cover, you know, their basic needs, there usually isn't extra money for things like holidays and gifts, and birthday gifts, and, and that's where Project Joy comes in. So every year, Marion County employees receive a holiday wish list from these children in these resource families via Project Joy. And last year, our Marion County employees were able to support 30 families, almost 180 kiddos, and we purchased over 300 gifts, everything from, you know, toys and clothes to diapers and hygiene products. And in total, through gifts and cash donations, we raised a little over $8,000 for these kids. So this year, we wanna continue the tradition, and our Project Joy toy drive kicks off on Monday, on November 17th. It runs through December 12th, and we'll be collecting gifts and delivering them to the Project Joy sorting facility on the 15th and 16th of December. And in addition to those wish list items, we're also accepting donations of diapers, toiletries, monetary contributions, all of those are accepted. So if you're a community member and you want to donate, they can, those donations can be dropped off here at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, in the Human Resources Office on the fourth floor. And if you'd like to write a check and do a monetary donation, that should be made out to the Oregon Resource Family Association, and delivered to that address as well. So if anybody has any questions or would like more information about this year's fundraiser, just feel free to reach out to me directly, using the information on the slide here. And, you know, I'd like to hand it over to Erin to talk a little bit more about Project Joy, but before I do that, I just wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you to the commissioners and to our wonderful staff and to the community partners that help us with this fundraiser. Your support just makes the holidays a little bit brighter for these kids, and, you know, we couldn't do it without all of you. So I wanna turn it over to Erin Hampton and Riley, and they're gonna share a little bit more about how Project Joy helps the kids that we serve.
Good morning, I'm Erin Hampton. I would just really wanna make sure that all the employees and the commissioners know how much they are greatly appreciated. Yes, we have our weredoes coming in. But I, more importantly, I want you guys to meet Riley. Riley is now the voice for teens on our board, she is a senior in high school, she was in foster care, but she has her forever family, and she would like to tell you guys what Project Joy has meant to her.
I'm here today to share a very personal part of my life, my, my journey through foster care and the impact Project Joy has had on me. My story begins with a childhood that was heavy with fear and uncertainty, I didn't know the comfort of a safe home or simple joys most kids experienced. Instead of laughter filling our homes, there was yelling. Instead of feeling protected, I learned to always be afraid. When I was placed in a foster care, I felt completely lost. I arrived at my new placement with nothing, no clothes, no familiar blanket, and not even a toothbrush I could call my own. That's when Project Joy found me. I remember the day a volunteer handed me a brand-new backpack, it felt like receiving a treasure chest, it wasn't just the items inside, the necessities like new clothes and pajamas that mattered, though those gave me back my sense of dignity. It was the toys, especially a simple pink stuffed teddy bear that truly changed everything. That bear gave me my first safe place, having something to hold on to made the darkness feel a little less overwhelming. For the first time, I had possessions that were truly mine, that backpack was more than just stuff, it was a powerful message that I mattered, that I was seen, and that I deserved comfort. This gift gave me my first stable ground I'd ever stood on, it became a bridge to help me trust my new adopted parents. We would color in the coloring books from the backpack, and those quiet moments slowly built a connection between us. Project Joy didn't just give me toys, it gave me tools to start building a new life. Project Joy doesn't just give material items, they restore childhoods and plant seeds of hope. They show me that I was worthy of love and happiness, and that message was the start of which I began my healing. My journey wasn't easy, but it began with that first act of kindness with the backpack that told me my life could be different. Thank you for supporting Project Joy, when you support them, you're not just donating toys or necessities, you're giving a child like me the most precious gift of all, hope and dignity, and the chance to finally be a kid. You're telling them that their stories matter and that their future is worth investing in, for that, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your story, that was wonderful.
I hadn't heard that story before, so I'm a little choked up too. Thank you, Riley, that was great, good job.
Have you ever, have you ever told your story before like that, Riley?
No, in my college essay though, but no one's read that yet.
Wow, that's a big deal. Well, thanks for coming down here.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, thank you, Riley, for being here, and it's on YouTube, so you can, you can look back. You've got it permanently recorded now, so I thought it was really interesting, and I really appreciate your thought, your, your comments on, it's not necessarily the material things that matter, it's the, it's the hope, and it's the making you feel that you are, you matter.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I always say this, the, the best two days of our lives are the days we're born and the day we figure out why, you know, why are we here? And it's great to hear your story and, and how this project has, has made a difference in your personal life. And how you're still there giving back now is really, really important and awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some gifts and a thank you to present to you guys, and that will be done by the Grinch, if I can yell.
That's good. I'm glad the Grinch is reforming his life here.
The Grinch has always scared me, so I don't know that I can, you know.
You gotta give him a second chance, Commissioner.
Yeah. This is a gift from the Grinch, wow.
That's it? You're gonna have to think about that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Kathleen, are we gonna, are you gonna share what, how people can give to this project, or do you wanna reemphasize that?
Do, do you, oh, sorry.
So, oh, thank you. So at this point, their website doesn't have a way, a link that you can donate via credit card. So if you wanted to donate monetarily, you'd have to write a check, and that will be made out to the Oregon Resource Family Alliance, and it can be delivered here to Courthouse Square. And I can put that address up again if you think we need to do that.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna do that.
Do you wanna do a picture?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I, I need a picture with the Grinch. I think I've overcome my fears.
All right, here we go.
Brad, do you wanna hold the, the name of all the signatures?
No.
You're right in the middle there, next to the Grinch. What's your name?
Zoe Amco.
Grinch, for some, some.
Thanks for coming here. That's your dad. Three, two, one. One more. Got it?
So good, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Commissioner Cameron, this is, every year, this is my favorite fundraiser we do.
It really is around the holiday.
But it was, but it was pretty special to have Riley here, tell her story. Thank you, everybody. This is a good one.
Yeah, and, you know, last year, the, it was over $8,000 in Marion County alone, just from our staff.
Yeah, that's a really good thing.
It's good to know, and that's right on the heels of our United Way fundraiser.
Yeah.
The things that we can do in our community, so. You ready for?
I'm ready. Can I move the consent?
You're just so far away today, right?
I'm sorry.
There's this canyon in between us.
It's, it's not signifying anything. I feel very close to you in spirit.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chair, I will move the consent calendar first under Board of Commissioners, Board Committee Appointments, Property Value Appeals Board. Approve orders appointing George Grabenhurst and Jack Yarborough to the residents pool, and Bob Riggy and Jennifer Sasaki to the chairperson's pool, and the residents' pool for the Marion County Property Value Appeals Board, with terms ending June 30th, 2027, with Bob Riggy being appointed as chair and Jennifer Sasaki as vice chair. Under Health and Human Services, approve the contract for services with Caroline Grady-Castillo, M.D., in not to exceed amount of $600,000 to provide medical director services for Marion County's public health program and serve as a health officer effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2028. Under Human Resources, approve the recommendation to update the classification and uphold pay grade for class codes number 451, Electr- Electronics Technician 1, and number 452, Electronics Technician 2. Establish and adopt classification number 316, Budget Manager, and update the classification and adjust the pay upgrade for class codes number 037, Payroll Manager, number 081, Program Supervisor, number 082, Program Coordinator 2, number 084, Program Coordinator 1, and number 195, Corrections Nurse, number 374, Principal Planner, number 548, Public Works Health Worker 3, and number 550, Public Health Worker Number 2. Under Juvenile Department, approve the contract for services with Secure Task Technology Corporation in not to exceed amount of $173,102.96 for replacement of the Door Access Control System that is at end-of-life at the Marion County Juvenile Detention Center through November 30th, 2026. Under Public Works, approve incoming funds, primary funding agreement with Circular Action Alliance, Oregon LLC, that outlines the terms under the CCA Oregon, will administer up to $3 million in approved reimbursements to the county for recycling-related expenses under the Oregon law. Under Sheriff's Office, approve incoming funds grant agreement with Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of $5,504,640 to support Marion County Justice Reinvestment Programs retroactive to July 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2027. Also under the Sheriff's Office, approve incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections in the amount of $29,216,848 for expenses related to community correction, supervision, and services retroactive to July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027.
I will second the motion. We have a motion to second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay, uh, next up, we have Ryan Crather. We're gonna consider the approval of a design-build contract with Acoustic Technologies Incorporated. Uh, this is a system that utilizes federal grant funding to provide real-time alerts and warnings for the Marion County Public Safety Canyon Alerts Project through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Crather, Marion County Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Greg Walsh, Marion County Emergency Management.
And as you said, we're here to talk to you about our canyon alerts project and the design-build contract with Acoustic Technologies Incorporated, or, uh, ATI Systems. Uh, turn it over to Greg to talk a little bit about the background of our project and, and, uh, what we are really trying to do with this, uh, project.
Thank you, Ryan. Good morning, Commissioners. As, uh, the project overview, this, again, comes from the community-oriented policing services grant funding that was requested following the two thousand twenty wildfires. Uh, we received one point eight million dollars awarded for the project, uh, with no specific grant require, uh, match requirements for that. And the end of the period of performance for this is March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, so this is coming up pretty quick. Unfortunately, we've been working with the, uh, with the contractor, they feel like they would be able to accomplish the work in that time. The intent here is to provide sirens, uh, communication and lights for, uh, throughout the canyon. And this is going from, you'll, we, we have a map image here in the next slide, which we'll get to here in a second. But again, this is designed to provide those emergency alert and warnings in real time to make sure everybody is aware and informed when, uh, critical emergencies are occurring in the canyon area, so they can evacuate or take shelter as needed and be informed. Uh, again, the capability of this system gives us the ability to provide those immediate, emergency communications from the Sheriff's Office, from Emergency Management, from the Com nine and one dispatch center, and the five fire district stations that are located within this area. And then it actually has a web app option, so anybody who is also trained or, uh, part, as part of the system, can open up their phone and activate an alert if necessary. So, we're working with the Sheriff's Office, obviously, for the folks that are up there patrolling, uh, and have that twenty-four-seven coverage. The intent here is that we have twenty-four-seven capability to initiate, uh, mass emergency alerts throughout the canyon for any emergencies that are occurring. Uh, Ryan, if you'd go to the next slide? This is the initial coverage map. Looks a little chaotic here, but the, uh, what you see here is those yellow Xs are actually the siren locations that they have proposed, with the blue being, uh, the higher decibel, uh, eighty decibel arc, and then the yellow is a seventy decibel arc. So essentially, providing, uh, appropriate volume for the community not to be too loud, but enough that everybody will hear it and be able to respond to that. And associated with each of those towers is also going to be a strobe light, uh, for ADA compliance and hearing impaired. So, the intent here is that we'll provide coverage throughout this region, uh, to ensure that we can reach out and inform everybody. Ryan?
Can you go back to that slide? What's the, the, uh, circle dot up there in the far right?
That is Brighton Bush. Uh, so around.
So, there will be a, an alert in Brighton Bush?
The, yes. We have been working with the company, they, they feel that they can get a siren up there and have it connected and everything, so, um, we feel very confident that we'll be able to actually work with them and be able to have a siren up there.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So, this is, this is, uh, a current situation. We've got, uh, Forest Road, what is it, two forty-six, and look at it, is closed, right? Would they be able to isolate that, uh, particular, um, area and say, you know, to let everybody know that the way out of here is, is, I guess it'd be eastbound or towards Estacada?
Yes, sir. So, each of these sirens are designed to be, we can create groups of them, so we can pick one or two, we can pick a whole area, we can, and we can pick different messages. So, uh, an example we used when we were developing this, discussing with the company, is if we had, uh, a, a fire event, let's say in the middle, we could set sirens that say evacuate east, and other sirens that say evacuate west, so it's not telling people misinformation, and that way we can, uh, really do what you're asking.
So, there's an audible, uh, voice recording that you could flash?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The system has very, uh, several capabilities, pre-recorded messages, live broadcast messages, uh, sirens, as well as the strobe lights. So, um, we can do some ad hoc, just pick up the microphone and say Brighton Bush area, you need to evacuate, or the road out of, out is closed currently, please evacuate towards Estacada. Um, so we have, there's a lot of capabilities with the system between our pre-recorded messages, which we're working on developing and will bring for approval, uh, and then also the ability to just, uh, pick up the microphone and send a, a message that is real time.
So, so today, actually, or this week, would have been a real good example where we could have used this just in a minor area.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
So, this is the system architecture that they proposed to us, so we have, uh, forty-four speaker stations throughout, uh, as were identified on that previous map. Uh, that's essentially what they look like. We have that one additional station, so we actually have forty-five speaker system stations, but that one additional one is in Brighton Bush. It's a little bit different, um, just for size and area coverage. We're using, uh, FirstNet as one of our connectivity, uh, processes for this. And then we have, uh, control stations, which will be providing regular updates. Uh, you can see there, there's the mass alert software on the left side, and then the actual, uh, base station. That base station does have a smart screen, so that's what we're looking at putting in the fire districts. So, the fire districts and the chiefs there can initiate in a, a notification if necessary. Again, we're working through some of the approvals and authorizations on this. Uh, or they can pick up that hand mic and just say what they need to over the microphone and have it broadcast appropriately. And then at the top middle, we have that remote activation from web interface, so that's where we can select and group and manage the system, so we can activate some sirens, but not all of them. And just, this is essentially what the architecture looks like as far as a system, and then the, the previous map provided really that coverage area that we're looking at.
Just another kind of a technical question. So, I'm thinking, there's no cell service in, uh, North Fork, right, at, after a certain point? So, um, even if our sheriffs were up there and they needed to activate this, would there be one in the, in the, um, in the station, the North Fork, uh, Fire Station? Is that where they would go? They have, I think they have internet access there.
They do have internet at the Elkhorn, are you talking about the Elkhorn, uh, Volunteer Fire Station?
Yeah.
That is one of the locations we've been working with to look at putting one of those base stations there, so they could initiate the ones that are in that area specifically.
Okay, and then how about the Detroit Ranger Station, uh, Forest Service? Are they involved with this?
We are including them. We're including a lot of stakeholders and other partners, including Lynn County, uh, Emergency Management, to make sure that we, as we hit the coverage, which does, again, cross some borders and is in some of those hard-to-reach areas, that they're all informed. So, we are working on stakeholder information, uh, that will be sent out shortly, uh, so everybody's aware, and then also getting the communities in, involved in educating the community on there's sirens going in, into this area, so this is what the different sirens mean, here's, uh, we're looking for those community champions also to help us make sure we reach everybody. Um, so we're, we're coming up with some different oper, options to, uh, get this information out to the communities, and we'll be working with all the districts, special districts, uh, and everybody else who's in this area. Thanks.
All right, uh, for our contract that we're bringing before you, uh, we release this as a design-build contract. Um, so that means the contractor is essentially responsible for everything, start to finish. So, they're doing the design on the system, they're going to have to permit the system, construct, uh, commission the system, and then also we included providing training to, uh, the county and other stakeholders, sheriff, anybody who may have to use this system, and a three-year warranty, uh, to make sure that we get it, it's functioning, um, and before we take full ownership without that warranty, that, that it works for a few years. Our selected contractor was, uh, Acoustic Technologies at one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents, so, uh, the price fits well within that grant award. Um, and then our schedule, the contractor, uh, by contract, is going to be completed by March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. Um, and with that, do you have any questions for us?
Well, that's a quick, that's a quick, uh, bill, especially with, in the middle of winter, right? In some of these locations?
It is. There is an option to extend our grant. The reason we put that in is that is when the grant, uh, award expires. There's an option to extend, but we're not guaranteed that option to extend, so we wanted the contractor to be ready to move quickly.
All right.
And they did, they, in our, one of our conferences with them, they did say that they had, uh, several pieces of this equipment already on standby in their warehouse. They have, they've pre-built some of the, the items, they have a stockpile of it, so they feel that they can.
They're ready to go soon, as we.
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is good. I remember this, this came from the community, and they wanted this. Um, I am a supporter of it. My wife is from the Midwest, they have tornado sirens, because tornadoes are not an infrequent problem back there. Unfortunately, now we live in wildfire, uh, time where wildfire is a real thing, so I think having sirens is a good idea. Or an alert system, or I'm sure I'm saying the wrong thing, but the idea that if, if your phone isn't hooked up to the system, there's still a way to, to let you know that it's time to leave, I think is important.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think, I'm trying to recollect, as a kid growing up in Southern California, I think we had audible testing. Uh, I remember my grandparents had a, um, a bunker in their backyard.
Really?
Yeah. I think it was all post, um, World War II stuff, whatever, but it was, uh, you know, they had food and all this stuff, and then there was an audible testing of a system, and I think it was all about the nuclear days or whatever. But, um, I remember those things, and they would always say this is a test, and then they would send these messages, they're pretty loud.
There you go.
Maybe that's why I can't hear today. All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Uh, let's get this thing approved. Uh, we'll move that we approve a design-build contract with Acoustic Technology, Inc., DBA, ATI Systems, that utilizes federal grant funding in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents to provide real-time alerts and warnings for Marion County Public Safety Canyon Alerts Project through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. And it says, the contract's through November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-seven, however, we saw it appear March of twenty-six.
So, the, the expiration date of the contract, we put out beyond the completion date for the work. Uh, in case there's any punch list items, in case there's any cleanup work they need to do.
And, and the warranty.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
I will second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, Shane, you're up. We're gonna consider approval of Amendment Number Six, the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract with Sladen Constructors to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of six million, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents for a new contract total of nine million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Said that wrong. For the construction of the Brooks Hopmere Water Improvement Project through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Shane Odison, Marion County Public Works. And as you already mentioned, um, this is for the, uh, Guaranteed Maximum Price or GMP Amendment to the contract we already have, um, that contract, Public Works, five-eight-six-four dash twenty-four. Um, the contract is with Sladen Constructors, and this is kind of the portion to build the full project. So, just kind of a quick, high-end overview of the project. I mean, this is for the Brooks Hopmere area, um, and it's a drinking water improvements project, and I'll go into more detail exactly what we're gonna be doing with the project. But it's federally funded, uh, we were awarded some ARPA funds through the board, um, that totals around fourteen million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And we choose to do the Construction Manager and General Contractor, um, contract for this project because of some tight deadlines and some challenges that, um, you know, were part of the project, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So, the project components, um, is gonna be the, the installation of, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon reservoir, a booster pump station, a water distribution line, uh, water service lines, and some fire hydrants that go through the, you know, portions of the community there in Brooks. Um, we've previously, uh, the, the Board have previously, um, approved early work amendments one through five, and that was just to get the contractor, um, moving quickly, essentially, um, obtaining and procuring some kind of long lead time equipment, as well as doing some preliminary investigations to help facilitate the design. So, um, they've ordered pumps and, and miscellaneous gear that they needed to do so early. We also did some potholing activities and, um, got that information to the designers. We've also ordered the tank and, um, started the deep foundation, um, design for that tank. And then we also started some early civil work out there on-site, where they've kind of started some grading, um, putting down some rock foundations, and kind of getting ready for the big portions of the construction. And we did this just to kind of get them going in the interim before we kind of finalize the guaranteed maximum price contract we bring before you today. So, uh, currently, the project is a hundred percent designed, um, and constructed, started in that early work amendment five, that's early civil work, um, in September. Um, so here's a couple of pictures that kind of show a lot of rock down, essentially, more or less. Um, and then in the contract, substantial completion will be November of two thousand twenty-six, and that's because we need to expend all of the ARPA money by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six, so we need to make sure that they're done on that day. Um, and so why did we choose the guaranteed maximum price contract? Essentially, the ARPA funds, as I mentioned, expire at the end of next year, and so we have this tight timeframe where we need to have, it, it's best to have the contractor and designer working together on the project to make sure we're not designing something that isn't gonna be constructable and, um, you know, trying to speed things along as quickly as possible. Um, also, as we mentioned, too, there's some specialized equipment that has long lead times and some limited manufacturers and suppliers for that equipment. So, uh, we wanted to make sure we got out there and got that stuff ordered as quickly as possible. A typical, like, design bid-build project, it would have been very difficult to get all the specialized equipment on time and expend that money, um, by that ARPA deadline of the end of next year. So, um, the total GM, GMP amount is nine million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents, and that includes the previous, um, pre-construction and early work amendments that totaled just over three million dollars. Um, so we're amending the, that con, those contracts, I guess, with the, with the GMP amount, which is six million, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Cameron?
No. Shane, thanks for being here and taking over this project. I know there's, this is really important, and, and it's the last project, too, that, that staff is still moving forward on, on these two projects, really important. I know we didn't do a groundbreaking on this, uh, area, but I, I think maybe we, is, if there's a right time, um, Mr. Chair, we oughta go out there and, and maybe it's just before they install the tank, or when they install the tank, have a ribbon cutting on this thing, because this is a really important project. Um, this, this area, uh, has been one we've studied for, uh, well, when Tom, Tom was here with our Economic Development Department, we did some studies out there to say, hey, what, what, because we knew the, um, Mill, the Mill Creek Industrial Complex that Salem has was filling up quickly. Where's the next industrial growth gonna happen in our area? And, you know, this is a, a really good example of, um, long-term planning vision of saying, where, where should things go? This is infrastructure they're gonna need up there, and we know this isn't the, the final, um, this isn't the, what I want to say, that the, um, the final infrastructure that's gonna make everything boom and grow up there, but it's a step towards, a big step towards making sure that they have the infrastructure up there. The fire hydrants are really important, because now they don't have fire protection up there, and, and each one of those individual industrial, any industrial complex, they have to have, um, enough water to suppress fire. This'll help, um, with, with development, that people want to come in. But I just want to thank you for, for making sure this project keeps moving forward and, and, and the timeframes, like you said, are really tight to get these things done, but great work from many people to make this happen. But I really want to go out there and kind of, uh, recognize this, um, some, someplace in time, maybe if you think about where that might be, uh, in the construction phase, that we can come out and, and, uh, do a ribbon cutting and celebrate for the people in the community of Brooks and, uh,
Yeah.
and talk about the future, uh, what this will do for us, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, big step forward.
Yeah.
I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Cameron said. Thanks for taking this on and running with it.
And I want to thank, I want to thank my peers. I want to thank you, Commissioner and, and Commissioner Beffel, that we all agreed that when we got this ARPA money, that we, and I always think of my grandsons, they're, they're now like four or five years older than when we got this money, right? Uh, this is an investment that, um, uh, we borrowed. The federal government borrowed this money on the backs of, of our. on the backs of, of our future, your kids, my grandsons.
Yeah.
And that we're putting it into infrastructure that'll be here 20 years from now, when they're starting a business and, or going to work for somebody. So I just want to thank that we're all on the same page of, of investing these monies and, in, in long-term projects. And I think, you know, Steve's people, Steve's kids, and I just look around this room and say, hey, we all got, you know, younger people that are going to benefit from, from this, so thank you.
Okay, I'll take a bow.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number Six to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract with Sladen Constructors, Inc., to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of six million, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six, seventy, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents for a new contract total of nine million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents for construction of Brooks Hopmere Water Improvement Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for our agenda today. Commissioner Cameron, do you have any thoughts you want to share before we adjourn?
Well, we, we celebrated Veterans Day yesterday, and I know it's always a good day to think about why we get to do what we get to do, and all those people that have defended our nation and helped us be able to, to do what you and I get to do every day and represent the people.
Yeah.
In this country, so.
And especially coming up on the 250th anniversary of our country.
Yeah.
Kind of holds even more significance in some way.
And of course, AJ was here last week, but he'll tell you that the Marines were 250 years old before our country was 250 years old.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
I guess they had a big party on Tuesday night.
That's it, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't dare go by there. Probably would have taken a breath and inhaled something, some alcohol fumes or something. Yeah. It's interesting, because Bickie was talking about it, that when, when she was younger, you know, her dad was a captain in the Marine Corps, he was a pilot, and not, you know, had a lot of decorations, but she said they would always go to the, the base for the Marine anniversary.
Okay.
You know, and they'd all be dressed up, and, and she remembers those, those days when she was younger, so, I mean, I didn't get to experience that.
Yeah, well, I hope they had a good celebration.
I think so. I haven't seen AJ this morning.
That's probably a good.
Of course, I just got here, so. Yeah.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.